I'm not going to come in.
I can't keep you on for a while, but that may happen.
It's the scoop, yeah. Yeah, oh, we can do that.
You're worried about getting the weather?
I'm worried about the weather.
You're worried about getting the weather? I've got coke, you want a challenge, please, because I'm waiting on it. This is how we affect change.
This is how we do it.
This is how we affect change.
We thought perhaps mention that, but.
Maybe because I'm messing up.
When you're in the HR, and they start talking, your question looks at you.
Hmm, I have one of those.
Just like.
Who gets that hot seat, what, right? Like, you walk in here, and that seat's not that bad. It's, this is about me. You're sitting right here, just helping.
Yay! Hooray! Uh-oh! What'd you do? What'd you do? I didn't do it.
Sweet innocent. Sweet innocent.
She's with kills all over the place. She's unbelievable. It's a cable, not with the horns.
No. I remember him when he was.
I hope Ryan will take him for it, so. Outside, I'm trying. I was gonna say, I'm trying to make these. Really? The same road. Thanks. I will find them.
I'm still happy. I feel like.
Right, right.
I can't. It was very. But I'll say that. So I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm not.
I mean, that is.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call to order tonight's meeting for Monday, October 27, 2025. We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Vast Pastor Dave, if you'll say a prayer.
Dear the Father, we just pray that you will just be with us tonight as we discuss the city business, and then we just ask for that we would have a good meeting, and we just thank you for all that you do for our city, in Jesus' name, amen.
Becky, the public box is empty, correct? Okay. If I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Passage unanimous? City Administrator Department will report its financial overview. Becky?
I have nothing other than, I did talk to Jason Hoskinson with BG Consultants last week on the dam repair specs, and he did move us up on his list, so we should be hearing from him shortly on that.
So continue table that.
And I believe Chief Wisdom.
I have several things to talk about this evening. To start off with, last Friday, we got the email, and I will pass this out, from ISO, that we are officially in regression.
Thank you, sir.
That is a copy of what was sent to us. And in the response back to this, the chief, the fire chief has 30 days to respond back in a yes or no letter to, yes, we're going to go through this regression, and this, you know, we're going to start working to correct these issues. In this, also 60 days, I have to have a plan of how we are going to correct the things that we have failed on in this ISO report. So officially, we have a year from last Friday to get everything corrected, to get everything in the right direction, to get everything as to where ISO can come in and re-inspect. I think that date was the 21st.
Oh, of the summer?
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty, oh, the 24th, okay. When we, whenever we got that, so. I knew this was coming, but like anything else that is a major thing, you know, I feel a lot of weight on my shoulders right now. But I wanted to let you guys know with that at first, and then we can move on if you have no questions or comments about what we can. I will, I will tell you, I can't answer a lot of the, the scoring on there because I don't know what the maximum amount of scoring is per section.
So what are you looking for, from us? What would you want?
I just wanted to let you know that we officially have gotten, gotten, we have received the email from them, so we actually have a year from that date to get everything corrected for a reinspection. That was just, I'm just letting you see the scoring and everything that we have had there, so you guys are aware that we are officially in, in this regression moving forward. As far as I can tell, with everything that's happened in the last few months, it sounds to me like we want to move forward to correct this, and so that was going to be the only thing that I would have to ask you as you guys are, I am reading the, the room right, and we want to move forward in correcting this yes or no, because I have 30 days from last Friday to send a letter back to the ISO about, yes, we are going to move forward in correcting these things.
Far as I'm concerned, yes, we should respond to this, and make every step that we can to bring our fire station back up to operating.
Yep.
So will you draft up the letter, or will you?
Yes. It ha, it's a, according to the paperwork I have, and I want to call the la, the lady that did the inspection to verify, it is stated in there that it is a handwritten letter. What I want, my handwriting is not very good, so what I want to talk to her about is if it's, if it's an email that I can send, or if it's an actual letter that we have to write, and I have to sign, and then, you know, that will give me the, the mailing time to be able to get this to her if it's a handwritten letter.
I'm going to piggyback off of Aaron, and I'm going to say that I am also in favor for you to move forward on this, and, yes, I would like for you to contact her to see, you know, how it could be.
Yep.
And then, is there any way you can ask her what these numbers, these numbers are for us?
Yes, that's one of the things that I want some clarification on. I didn't want to talk to her before I got it, because, you know, I didn't, you know, I won't have any numbering system before we receive this to be able to compare to what the maximum scoring is in this, so, you know, this gives me a better idea of what we are going to be shooting for.
I think I've got that scheduling numbers at home.
Okay.
Digging it out for you to take it over to you tomorrow. Is there anything you need from the council?
Um, no, I just wanted to make sure that you guys are along with the feeling that the mayor and myself have in moving forward to get this corrected, and not to, you know, because if we don't move forward in the 30 days, then it would go back to the way it was before we wanted to continue this fire department. You know, this is, this is a very big thing, and the weight on my shoulders is, if we get this correct, we get, we get everything inspected, we get everything moving, and hopefully, nobody's insurance changes a lot, but if we fail, then that, the, the insurance area around here could really change, so. We, I have a good team of people behind me, and I feel that if, I, I feel that if you, I needed anything from you guys in correcting or whatever we need to do, as long as it's within reason, we can, we can establish this. Now, I have a couple of people that have contacted me that have been through this, or they haven't contacted me, they have contacted some of my other firefighters that have been through this regression process, so I do have them phone numbers that I can reach out to, to see what we can, you know, what we can do, what we can, can't do, and things like that, somebody to lean on whenever things get, we don't know where we need to go for sure, so.
Well, if you need anything, you always contact me.
Huh?
You can always contact me.
Okay, alright. Any other questions about that? Concerns?
I can just say that from a legal standpoint, it just says, we request that you acknowledge this letter in writing within 30 days, and so that just means not verbally.
Okay, just, okay, so I can email them to?
In writing means a typed letter, and, and letter through the mail, and email, fax, simile. It doesn't mean handwriting, it just means writing as opposed to verbal.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing, at the last council meeting, I was asked if I could get some numbers for some gear, some radios, prices, and stuff like this. I'm gonna start with the radio pricing. Now, when you look at this and look at the total balance, this is pricing for 10 radios, so if you look at each price in there, you can see actually how much one radio is going to cost us. Now, talking with Chief Snyder before he left, and talking with the mayor, there is also an update for the radios that we have, that's like, he thought it was like $105, so that we have two handheld radios and a radio in a truck that would have to have the updates that would cost us to have that done, but that is not part of necessarily this. I'm just showing you guys what it's going to cost to get some radios. At some point, I'm going to have to have radios if we're on a scene, we have to be able to communicate. You know, that feels like a safety thing to me. I just don't know if 10 radios at this time is something to reach for.
How many do you think you absolutely need?
With the two we, we would have, I would like to have five or six more. But, you know, if we can get 10, yeah, let's move, let's move forward to that.
It says customer programmed.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is there any secret handshake or whatever required to be able to do these? It's probably like doing a cellphone?
Uh, no, this is, this is actually our handheld radio that the IT department in the county, this is who I contacted to get the pricing, so the IT department will get the radios, they will program the radios, and whenever they are ready to go, they would just get in contact with me, and I would pick them up.
And you said, how many do you would like to have now?
I would like to have five or six, but, you know, there's, I started with this, and I probably shouldn't have, because we need gear as well, but I'm starting this route, and probably shouldn't have done that.
It's a good starting point.
Now, is this backing something that can't come out of the equipment fund?
They can, but they've, you've already approved gear.
Yes, four sets of gear, and I'm com, I'm coming around to that. So this would have to be a separate, my understanding is separate approval for this part of it to come out of the budget, the part of the budget, the special equipment fund, whatever we need to do.
Yeah, because we, we already approved the gear that you're gonna pass out, so.
And I have that stuff that I'm getting ready to hand out to you.
Yeah, so you want more than what was already approved?
No, this is handheld radio, this is not gear.
No, the gear itself.
What, this, right now, the what we're talking about, and I will give you that, copy of that letter, so you can see.
The radios?
This is just for handheld radios.
And that will come out of the equipment fund.
The radios, right, yeah.
If my math's right, we're looking at 37.7688 for six radios.
No. Maybe my math's, maybe my math's wrong.
No, my math is definitely wrong.
I have 4,485.18.
Four, six of them?
Four, six of them, I guess, 4,485.18.
Now, in that list.
Because I just did the, on the each, and then.
Because they're $747.53 each.
Seven hundred and forty-seven dollars a piece.
Times six.
That's what my math is wrong.
Sorry, Aaron.
No, it's fine, come here.
You know, maybe, maybe in next year's budget, we could readdress this and possibly get some more, or something moving forward.
How many firefighters do we currently have?
We, as of right now, officially, I have 12. I do have, one of the things I need to talk about is three of them are going to retire, or however you guys want them to, they're stepping down from the fire department, so. But that's something I was going to talk about later, is what kind of letter from you, from them to you guys, or whatever, that they are not going to continue with the fire department. But right now, officially, I have 12, whenever they come off, I do have an application that I'm getting ready to do an interview process in. If that's good, that would bring me back to 10 firefighters with the application that I have received.
So with 10 firefighters, and you have two radios right now, it would be eight radios to actually get everybody their radios?
To get everybody to, and then, you know, then we could possibly go for three or four more, that way, if, bringing more people on, that they would be able to have a radio.
And you said it comes out, what, the?
Special equipment.
Special equipment.
You said you found cheaper bunker gear?
Yes. Originally, when Councilwoman Randall was asking, I finally found a book that had the original stuff that she had talked about. This book is from Jerry Ingram, he is no longer with us, he has passed on, and I don't think his company is in, is in operation anymore. So I do have that to look at for comparable numbers, but it's not going to do us any good to try to go through this magazine to, to get the gear, and it was, it was $4,300 or something, in them rough numbers, to get four sets of gear. You can look at that magazine if you want. I have. I've only got one again, but here are. I have one more of them bunches to give to you. Yeah. Okay, these, these are two different estimates for gear. In the first paper that I handed you guys is the gear that they have. Whenever I contact this person, they, this is a guy out of Lewisburg. He has sent both of these out, his response to me on availability was, boots would be one to two weeks, the coat and the pants on the turnout gear would be two to three, maybe four weeks, but nothing faster than four weeks, the helmets and the gloves and the hood socks they had in stock. And I also have quotes from another fire gear sales. That basically, that tells you what the gear is. Okay, in, in this last one that I'm handing you out, he has put both sets of gear on the same quote. If you look at the third line down, it talks about rapid delivery gear, RDG-10, and then the next line down is rapid delivery gear, RDG-20. The illustration that I'm sending around will tell you the difference in the gear. Basically, the RDG-20 has a little bit more padding in it than the RDG-10, but they are fairly close in price. One thing, on the Wise Fire Safety Equipment estimate, he has Rocky boots. According to Ian from the NAFCO estimate, Rocky boots are on back order till March of next year, so the boots would possibly have to go to a different boot than what's on, on this quote. And this Wise Fire is the one that Councilwoman Randall and I met with down at the station back whenever we was first started looking at gear.
So which one would you suggest?
Well, I approached all of these quotes as trying to get the best, trying to get the most gear for the money that we have had allotted for, and I think it was, and I don't have the numbers, I couldn't go back and find the numbers anywhere, but I think it was 13,000 and something that I was approved to get gear, 13,100 and something. We can shoot for less than that, maybe, hopefully. That way, we'd save a little bit of money for radios or for other equipment that we're going to need as we move forward.
So it's NAFCO, is, would you go NAFCO over Wise, or Wise over NAFCO?
The, the turnaround on from the time to order to get, receiving the gear is about the same between the both of them, NAFCO is closer, so they could, you know, they're, he, this, this salesperson, Ian, is out of Lewisburg, so he could get the stuff to us. Bill Schneider from Wise is out of Leavenworth, if I remember right, but getting, getting our gear to us, I doubt would be a major issue.
Which set of gear do you consider to be the best?
Well, if we want to go with the best.
No.
Of what we have here. You know, it's going to be, um, the, either the RDG-twenty. That is what, um, um, Councilwoman Ra- Randall and I looked at. And the other one would be, um... The estimate that had, that's totaling thirty-seven, seventy-nine. And what that's probably going to consist of would be different padding. Now, I did not physically look at the NAFCO gear. Um, I just, um, I got his number from Chief Hegwell, and I got contact with him to give us some gear pricing, since he was closer, trying to get into the email chain to where maybe we can get some better deals on some stuff.
How many gear, now, how, um, you said you have three gonna retire, so how many gear do you actually need?
Well, I was approved, and all I'm shooting for right now is I was approved four sets of gear whenever...
Okay.
This first came out. Now, um, with the three that are retiring, I already have people going in to use their gear that they had. It is still in compliance with everything. I've already got people moving in to going to be wearing that gear. So three of the last... Uh, so, three of the last five will be in, um, City of Pleasanton Fire gear. So in, I, I do have two people currently that are in county gear that we have in our agreement that, um, the commissioners have allowed us to use. Um, I do have another person that is, I'm going to be interviewing, so we're going to end up possibly having four people in county gear that we can use. But, um, we're, we're getting a lot closer to having everybody in our own city gear to where if something happens to the county gear, we don't have to send it off to have it repaired or replaced, and then we're just out that set of gear.
So we said pick which one? Cause you're, you're the one who's gonna wear it.
But, when he doesn't have to, I mean, you guys don't have to make another motion until I'm the CC, and then it was previously approved, because it wasn't gear specifically.
Yeah. I'm, whenever I got my quotes, I was just trying to get as many quotes from different gear and different people as possible, so if, if we could get five sets of gear for the number that we had in total of four sets of gear from prior, then, you know, that would be the way that I would wanna go, but it doesn't necessarily look like that's gonna happen.
No, but you would save money in your budget?
Yes. And then we can move forward in trying to get gear at a different time.
I'd say you pick the best decision that you think is for your department?
Okay.
You've already been approved with the amount of thirteen thousand, what I like?
I think it's thirteen, one, some, one twenty-nine or something, but I could not find them numbers to be accurate to tell you. Uh, that was something, that was something that Councilwoman Randall had written down, and unfortunately, I can't get them numbers now.
I can let you know, and that's, it's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just say if you stay on your budget, then we can afford that for the next purpose.
Okay. Um, do you want to look at the book and look at the gear that was in the book? I mean, it isn't gonna do any good, cause I don't think Ingram Fire is even in business to be able to do it. Okay, got the hard stuff taken care of. Now, um, with all of the new firefighters that I have on, I'm getting my, um, officers and getting people working on different things as we're moving forward. One of the things that has been brought up to me, that I really like the idea, and I can have him come up and explain it better, if you would like me to. Um, I had, my assistant chief had talked about maybe getting some kind of a Facebook page, or let, he, he put it as social media page, and what our goal is, is to show the public that, you know, that truck setting next door just doesn't sit there, and their, their money is just going to nothing. It, it would show, um, partial pieces of training, it would show, it, you know, it would not show anything for on scenes, it would not show anything for people that are not tied to Pleasanton City Fire Department, it would not show the public in, in any way, shape, or form. But that would show that we could, you know, we are actually training, we are actually getting out and doing some community, um, research, and we're getting out to do some community, you know, talking to the, the people in the community. Um, I just would, wanted to know what's your thoughts about that? And there's other, other things that he can explain, if you would like for him to come forward?
If he wants to, he can.
All right, DJ.
Please, Dennis, would you like to do that?
I was hoping to get some videos on maybe a YouTube channel, and, um, other departments can actually benefit from that. They're using YouTube now to look at what some departments are doing as training, and the ideas that they're running with, and then they're employing it on theirs, and they're actually using those videos. Um, obviously, if you get enough subscribers and enough viewed hours, your channel can then be monetized, and as long as you're not breaking any YouTube rules, which we wouldn't be. Um, you could actually earn money off of those videos, and then like you were saying, on Facebook, we could put out the videos and the pictures, and, um, it lets the community, uh, comment. Of course, there'd be rules to the commenting, no profanity, and so it would, it would be a, um, Facebook group, not just a regular page, so we could moderate what's going through. And I understand you're not allowed to, um, stifle free speech on any type of government page, but you can have rules for decorum and stuff like that, so, um, we would be able to approve all the messages that wanted to be posted. And so if anybody was using profanities or anything like that, we obviously wouldn't allow that. But if they wanted to criticize us or anything like that, would, that would be allowed, it, it wouldn't be a problem. Um, any criticism would be taken, you know, as, as something we could probably work on, and maybe something we could address with the public. But then it kinda gets the public involved, it makes them feel a lot better about it, more tied to the, the fire department, and it ties the fire department to the community, and kinda gets everybody working together.
I'm, I'm for that. I would say that only YouTube can post, or edit, or anything like that, um, just to keep the individuals involved a little bit smaller.
Okay.
Um, no offense against the fire department, but...
Yeah.
If we get a disgruntled firefighter, I don't want them being on the... So, but yeah, I'm, I'm for it, as long as we can keep it secure.
Okay.
Yeah, would you show, like, when, um, General Pleasanton Day is fourth of July, when you guys were out there doing stuff, um, you know?
Absolutely. Uh, we'd make sure we'd post the date, so they know we're gonna be there, and then, so they'd, they'd have notice, and then maybe, maybe be able to post some pictures of interaction and stuff like that also.
And would you get, I know, interaction with the public and stuff, but with, like, kids and stuff, would you get their, if they're in the picture or whatever, get the kid, parents' permission that they could be on there, whatever?
Uh, we would ask, but we're, we would ask, but we're really going to try and focus on not having too much contact with photographing children or anything like that. We really wanna try and keep it to us. Obviously, if my kids are up there, I'll let my kids take photos, and so there's some interaction there that would be allowed, but, um, yeah, we're, as far as just going in and taking pictures, the general public, I don't, I don't know what kind of releases we'd need, and I, I don't wanna get into that, I'd rather just stay well on the legal side, so...
As long as it's in public, and there's no...
Yeah.
... privacy.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. That way it shows the community that we really fought for this, and it's gonna survive.
Outstanding. Any other questions?
Do we have to have a motion? Or anything?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I was gonna write a list down of everything I need to talk about, but, um, that was one of the main things. Um, we, we have talked, as some of us have talked, and whenever we have our next meeting, I will bring it to all of the firefighters' attention to get their, their two cents worth about having a meeting, a meet and greet, you know, renting the community center and doing a coffee and donuts, or something along the lines of that, so the public can come in and see the firefighters, see that we are trying to continue to make this move forward in a positive way. Um, so, you know, that's just some of the things that I need to make sure all of the firefighters are on board with that, and I don't think there will be an issue with that as moving forward, because right now, everybody wants this to succeed, and we are all moving forward in, in the direction that we can do to get this to succeed. Um, and there's a couple of other things that have come up as, you know, diff- different community outreach type things that we can do, but I think that, I think in the ISO, there's something about, um, there is a community, not really a community outreach, but, um, something to show that we are doing stuff in the community, to educate the community on sa- fire safety, or some kind of a safety type thing. So, you know, we're trying to implement things like that, as well as getting all of this other stuff going. So, um, one thing that I've talked with a few of them about is, once we get a plan of training and what we wanna do, we may have to go to train two times a month, instead of having one training that's five or six hours long, we may have to go to a, um, two times a month training of two to three hours, so, you know? And so far, everybody seems to be on board with that. And if we, if we get our plan set, and say we are ahead of schedule, after five or six months of doing this, then, you know, we could start slacking off on doing it twice a month, so, because I know everybody has things that they need to do. But I will say the firefighters that I have are dedicated to make this move forward in a positive way.
Sounds good.
Can I, let me ask you a question? Um, with your twelve firefighters you're not, you have now, um, and you have a training, is all of them showing up?
Uh, whenever I do have, uh, the last, I have not had a training for, officially for everybody showing up. I did have a meeting the other night about some FRA stuff that we, the firefighters have to have coverage for things like that, but that was only for the people that have started at the same time I was on, whenever I started, because we have to have cur- uh, coverage in a certain amount of time. So, not everybody showed up for that one, but, um, whenever we have a meeting, um, I will remind and make sure that everybody has plenty of time to know that if they're not showing up, then I will be getting in contact with them and finding out what we can do to change that to where they have the opportunity to show up. And one thing about moving to two trainings a month, you know, I understand everybody's busy, everybody has things going on, so maybe if they can't meet one, maybe they can meet at the other one, you know? A little bit of give and take on everything. So, with everybody new, I have not had a training yet to see if everybody's gonna show up, but we will find out beginning of next month, which is not very far away.
Nope, it's not. And then, what is your requirement for the trainings, you know, if you, for them to show up, though, and stuff?
Um, that is something that is going to be added into the SOGs. Uh, we are, we have a revised copy that I'm going to be getting to the mayor and to the city attorney to be looking at, to see if, if we need to change a few things in there. Um, but, you know, we're going to have to set a limit of you have to attend so many trainings a year. So, you know, and, um, that may be something that the officers have to get together and, and come up with that.
That's all I got for your things.
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
Uh, that, I'm sure I do, but I've already, that thoughts went away, so we'll address that next time.
Okay, so what would the, yeah, so the radios is what I was fixing to ask the council about, um, what is your else, pleasure on the radios at seven forty-seven, fifty-three each?
So, six would be forty-four, eighty-five, eighteen, correct?
Yes. And then you have fi- uh, they do five, it's three, seventy-three, seven, sixty-five.
You know how much we have in that account?
No.
It was roughly ninety thousand?
Yeah.
And then minus the thirteen-ish?
I thought when we initially talked about moving that money out of the fire truck budget, we had said something about twenty-eight thousand? There's a number that's in the back of my head.
Um, I, that might have been what the, like, twenty-two, no, because that's what it started out. Um, there was a number what was left in the, in the fire budget account that I have, that I'm working on this year, and I don't, I, I didn't get a chance to get down here and talk to, um, Ms. Hegwell about trying to find out what them numbers were, so...
So if my math is kinda correct, I know it's probably not, um, if we had ninety thousand, and we took thirteen something away from it, we have seventy-seven something. Give or take, if my math is correct. Give or take a little bit.
And I'm not up here trying to empty that fund. I know there's a lot of things that we could use, but I'm not trying to empty that fund, because I know what that fund was originally set up for.
And we know you're, we know you're not.
So, do we know how much is left in this budget for the fire department? Cause we're looking at about two months left of the year.
Yes.
It's not the fiscal year, right? We go into jail, right?
Yeah.
Um, so if we can, I'd like you to spend all of your budget.
Yes, that's, that's what I was, that is what I was wanting to get up here and talk with the city clerk about, to find out what them numbers were, so we could use the budget monies as much as possible, and not be dipping into the special equipment fund.
Yeah, and of the budget that's left, in December, we can always have a motion to transfer that amount into the special funds for...
Yeah, but if, if we can...
If we can use it.
If there's twenty thousand in there, I don't think he needs fifteen for two months, right?
No.
Hopefully?
So as I said, in the September, it was ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars. All right.
So what you could do if you wanted to take part of it out of the regular budget, and then if you got towards the end, um, and realize that you need to take it out of the equipment, we can make an adjustment if you wanna do it that way.
So I'd take all forty-four hundred out of the budget?
Well, you can do it whatever you want, and then we'll just watch it, and if the end, it looks like that we're gonna need that money for something else, then we can take it out, otherwise, then it won't come out of your, your money you've been saving.
Make a motion to purchase six radios at, uh, four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighteen cents.
I'll second that.
Come out of the fire department budget.
What was that total again?
Forty-four, eighty-five, eighteen.
And go ahead and put it in.
Oh, from KC Wireless Incorporated.
Does that include tax and shipping?
Um, being a city, um, I doubt if there is any tax on there, but, um, there shouldn't be any tax on it, since we're part of the city. Um, shipping, he didn't put anything on there for shipping, so... And, you know, whenever they are ready for me to pick up, I mean, if I can go to Mount City to pick them up, that a way he's not trying to send them all through the mail or anything like that. So hopefully no shipping on there.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of six radios for a total of four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighteen cents from KC Wireless. Any discussion? All those in favor? As is unanimous?
Uh, one last thing. Um, the, the money to update the radios that we have, do I need to go to you? It, it's only gonna be, um, like a hundred and five dollars a radio for three radios to update, I don't need to come to you to spend that?
You have a two thousand dollars money. You have a two thousand dollar spending.
Okay.
All right. Thousand, thousand dollars?
Thousand, sorry.
Thousand dollars, okay. All right. That's all I have. If you don't have anything.
I believe that's it. Thank you, sir. Any other questions regarding department tour reports? Jackson, did you have anything?
No.
No? Skipper?
How today?
Shrek eyes?
Yeah, um, I have a couple of things. Uh, first, um, I need a call executive session for elected personnel, please, for ten minutes.
For non-elected personnel?
For elected personnel.
Well, you can't have an executive session for elected personnel.
Why can't I?
Because elected personnel is public.
It'd be non-elected personnel.
Oh. Okay, non-elected personnel.
The non-elected personnel. Um, if, do you want to talk about that? You can talk about that in the executive session for their job performance or their job duties type things. But if you want to talk about elected personnel, then that has to be out here.
Even if it said something was said in about executive session, but it's been said out, out in public?
Any discussion pertaining to elected personnel is public. So unless we're talking about some sort of security or trade secrets or.
Okay, I'll just say I have nothing then.
You have nothing?
I guess I have nothing, guess.
Okay, Portman?
Yes, I prepared a letter. Um, during the last council meeting, there was a lengthy discussion about the mayor's veto of ordinance twenty-sixty-five. First, I want to take a moment to apologize if anyone found my tone during that meeting to be offensive. That was never my intention. I am passionate about ensuring this council follows the law, respects due process, and serves the best interests of Pleasanton. My words come from conviction, not hostility. Ordinance twenty-sixty-five was written at the direction of this council to modernize how our fire department operates to ensure that decisions about staff, sorry, about staffing are made based on qualifications, not politics. It lawfully gives the fire chief, a trained professional, the ability to appoint or recommend firefighters with the council retaining final approval. This structure follows Kansas statute and good governance practices. During the previous meeting, Mayor Young stated, and I quote, "Since the fire chief reports to me, it's a conflict of interest." And that I am responsible for what happens next. I want to address this directly. Under Kansas law, a conflict, conflict of interest exists only when an official has a personal or financial stake in a decision. Supervisory oversight is not a conflict and is normal and expected part of municipal government. When that statement was directed towards me, I was taken back. The tone and phrasing suggested more than a simple disagreement. It felt like an attempt to shift blame and discourage me from performing my duties as an elected official. Whether it was or, was it, whether it was the intent or not, no council member should ever feel singled out or pressured for doing what they were elected to do. Our disagreements should always remain professional and respectful. This council's role is legislative. We pass ordinances and establish structure. Once passed, it is the mayor's duty to execute those laws faithfully. The mayor's claim that I, as council president, am responsible for what happens next, represent, or, I'm sorry, misrepresents the roles clearly defined under Kansas statute. Responsibility for implementation lies with the executive branch, the mayor, and the administration, not with individual council members. Ordinance twenty-sixty-five was passed to improve public safety and assure our fire department is staffed and managed professionally, free from political interference. Suggesting that this ordinance creates a conflict of interest is not a matter of law, it's a matter of control. I believe in a city government that values transparency, professionalism, and mutual respect. The people of Pleasanton deserve nothing less. This council is acted within its full legal authority, and I stand firmly by the intent and purpose of ordinance two zero six five. Our community expects us to serve the public, not personal agendas. The law is clear, and the record will show that this council has followed it. And with that, I would like to make a motion to have the attorney draft an ordinance transferring the power of the police department and hiring to the police chief to follow like we did with fire chief.
Thank you, Councilman Portman, for that. Um, I thank you for, for passion. I believe that every council member should have passion for what they're doing and be able to speak freely on all of that. Um, one clarification that I would make is I did not say it was a conflict of interest. I said it was a conflict. So, uh, just that clarification alone, and it's not a political, excuse me. It is not a political move on anyone's behalf because there's no gain politically from who is or isn't appointed to positions. And, uh, bringing that and pushing it and so forth, okay? You did that? Follow the, um, process of the law. Absolutely, that's what we were called to do. Um, I will also point out that at the chief's request, I did appoint everyone that he had asked me to request, which was my intention before that meeting started. So, uh, just for clarification purposes.
If that was your intent, then why did you veto ordinance twenty-sixty-five? What conflict is there?
The conflict is, is the fire chief reports to the mayor.
Correct.
So whenever he's going to do something or bring something, you know, even firefighters. If something happens in the fire department, the mayor is on that lawsuit.
Okay.
Not the council.
Correct.
So if it's something that could potentially affect me and my family, then I need to make sure that I'm okay with it. Uh, because that's the way it runs and operates. So, even though I do not have to give a reason for anybody that I do or don't appoint, because as mayor, I appoint a lot of positions. And it is no requirement anywhere that I give reason as to why I am or am not going to appoint a particular person. Because if I interview nine people for the chief of police position, I'm not gonna give you eight reasons as to why I'm not appointing those eight people and reasons for the one I appoint, I am appointing. That would be ridiculous. So that simply is the, the structure and the order of the republic in which we live. It is nothing against anyone particular, nothing against anyone personally, because I have no reason to have anything against them personally.
There's still a motion on the table.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have the attorney draft an ordinance to change the current setup of the appointing of officers switched from the mayor to the chief of police. Is that a regular ordinance, or would that require a charter ordinance? Since it's by state law that all other officers are appointed by the mayor.
I would have to check on this. I would have to check on the statute regarding police officers, but.
It would be no different than the, um.
Hold on, if the, if the officers, if that is by statute that police officers are reported by mayor, then that is a charter ordinance, but I, but I think that that's a statute. It's not about the firefighters.
No, I would say, I've, you want to let me finish? I would have said, it's no different than the fire chief appointing his own, right, interviewing his own firefighters and everything. So, it's no different than the chief, the, um, police chief interviewing them and bringing them to the table for us to vote or on it, or not vote on it.
I think the biggest difference is a firefighter is a volunteer position.
Right.
A policeman is a higher position.
But I still, I mean, I.
And allowing the police chief to do the interviews, I, I agree with, but I don't agree with his ability to appoint to our budget without our approval.
Right, that's I.
We would still retain approval like we do with the fire chief.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I, I would get, uh, he would still have to bring it to us.
So I think the mayor is talking about the statutes that talk about the officers of the city, such as like the city administrator, those types of things. Um, being statutory, um, I'm not finding a statute at this moment, but I would like to look it up, but I, I don't think that police officers is what the statute, the Kansas statute means by.
The officers?
The officers. We're talking about city officers.
Just city officers, okay.
Administrator, those are the officers. They're defined in statute.
Okay.
Not police officers.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Okay, uh, the motion is on the table to, uh, transfer the power of appointment of police officers from the mayor to the chief of police. Uh, for police officers, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Could I have a clarification on your motion, Erin? Would you read the motion more, more?
My, my motion was to instruct the attorney to write an ordinance transferring the mayor's power of appointment to the police chief with council approval.
So, from the, from that standpoint, I agree with having her write an ordinance, and then we can review it.
Sorry, I, I'm, when I said, like the fire chief, he would still need our approval.
No.
So all in favor of the motion to have an ordinance drawn up that changes the mayor's appointment of police officers with the council approval to police chief appointment of officers with council approval? Correct?
Correct.
All in favor? Pass is unanimous for the ordinance to be written?
And with that, I have nothing else.
Okay, um, before, we have trunk or treats, um, actually, I'm gonna say, I'll make this statement once. Um, because I have spoken with, um, the fire chief on this and so forth. Um, it would be my suggestion or, um, point of thought for the council to think about creating some type of commission or committee that would actually do, um, the process of firefighters and police officers and so forth like that, as opposed to one person uh, being, in the term that you use, gatekeeper of such things. Of the which, the respective chief would be definitely within that, um, committee, commission, whatever it's called. Uh, just something for thought from your all's behalf. And then a reminder is trunk or treat Friday, October thirty-first, five to six thirty.
Need a couple judges.
Need a couple judges still. So if you're here and want to help judge, or you're watching online and want to help judge, please contact, uh, Mrs. Hegwald and let her know so that we have all of that in place there. And with that, I believe I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded for adjournment. All in favor? We are adjourned.
Four minutes early.
Give me enough time to get home and get my sweat.
And catch your guard in the game.
Oh, um, um, council members, please don't leave without signing.